It is now 1:13 PM and a quorum of the board is present. The regular meeting is reconvened. Ms. Evans, are there individuals who wish to address the board during today's meeting?
Yes, there are people who have registered to provide public comment, and I will review the rules. Each speaker will be limited to three minutes to address the board, and I will keep track of time. We will be strictly following the time limits so that everyone has an opportunity to speak. It is the practice of the board not to respond to comments during the public participation portion of the meeting. We will maintain an atmosphere of respect for all people. Any person disrespecting by name or otherwise will be asked to cease. Public participation will occur in person and virtually. We will begin public participation with the persons that are physically in the room with us today and then move to those in the queue online. First person in today is Bree Morgenberg.
I feel like these chairs discriminate. They're really large, and I feel like I could use a smaller chair, just to be clear. Thank you and good afternoon. Bree Morgenberg from Mount Pleasant. So just speaking off the top of my head today, you know, I was watching a conference or something a couple of days ago with Joe Biden, and if I'm not mistaken, his wife just got done having COVID. And there was something about like him going up to the podium, and he was like, no, 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 I don't need a mask. Keeping in mind, his wife just had COVID. So kind of the humor, but not humor in it is, we all know masks were not effective in stopping COVID. And in fact, there were actually a lot of adverse effects from wearing masks. So if you just kind of put that in your back pocket for a minute, because I do want to go back to it, the next thing that I'd like to say is there is nothing funny or humorous. And it's very disheartening and sad when people do become sick and they have COVID and they end up in the hospital, and especially our elderly. But what I just heard earlier today was reference that was a personal statement in regards to a personal loved one that had COVID. And as a school board member, you are elected to this position not to care for elderly patients that are out of the educational environment, but you're in fact elected to this position because you are supposed to work on caring for the safety and the welfare of the students regarding their educational experience. So with love, again, I say that, and as a school board member, you are elected again to keep in mind the students are what you are here for, not the elderly persons that are loved. And we all know that we, you know, want to take care of those people, but that's not why you're elected to this position. With that said, I have heard of a mask, no mask proposal that had been brought forth to this board, and I'm going to ask that you highly consider this again, and especially after viewing the M-Step scores. So we know over the last couple of years that masks were something that caused a lot of distraction within the schools, a lot of, I guess, flame, if you will, and logs thrown on the fire when it came to education. And it wasn't just the distraction that came along with it, but I'm going to ask you to consider the destruction that has taken place over the last two years. And we can see that with our M-Step scores. And this actually makes me want to cry. When I read the Detroit Public Schools, and I looked at this, their fifth grade math proficiency, I don't even know where this actually falls on this chart, but this is like below 10%. And then I'm looking at their ELA scores. I think by the time kids got to eighth grade, it was barely above 20%. This is not acceptable, and we need to bring the focus back to the kids and back to the education. And adding diverse classrooms for literacy that can include porn is not how we go about increasing literacy. What I did appreciate earlier today is when I listened to the ladies up here speaking about including the family, and that right there, folks, is what we need to do if we want to educate our children, is start including the family. And by doing that, include their values, include their beliefs.
Thank you.
I ask you to consider it. Thank you.
All right, next in the room is Katie Kaptian.
Hello. Hi, Katie Kaptian.
There you go. Come onto the table, and whenever you're ready, your three minutes can begin.
Okay. Katie Kaptian, former educator from Muskegon Heights Academy. I know I've been here before, and thank you for allowing me to speak again. I appreciate those who have watched closely to the situation going on in Muskegon Heights. At this point, we need more than spectators. We are reaching new levels of issues currently. If any of you have seen our most recent district board meetings, you will understand why. I welcome all of you to attend. There have been consistent violations of the Open Meetings Act, no discussions being held in front of the public, but consistently behind closed doors. There has also been consistent appointment and removal by the district board of PSA board members this year. If we are consistently reshuffling and configuring our PSA board that is responsible for the daily duties of the school, we cannot make any progress. Now there are too many cooks in the kitchen, and nothing is being done as we are trying to catch up all of these new board members of what's occurring, trying to get in new programs that have been voted on back in April and have not reached any level of progress to get those systems in the school. We are consistently met with roadblocks. Anyone who has spoken up or has revealed truths, who has whistleblown, anyone who has dissented has been removed, has been intimidated, has faced retaliation, firings, you name it. So more and more people do not feel comfortable speaking up anymore. So another thing I want to bring up are the patterns that have happened over these years. There have been years of child abuse allegations within the district and cover-ups stemming from a lack of due diligence in investigating, reporting, and transparency. This has led to minimal convictions and allowed for perpetrators to harm more children or potentially do so. Also, there's a disturbing pattern of silencing anyone who dissents or brings to light any violations through those intimidation tactics, removal, firing, and the risk thereof. There is a refusal to listen to student, parent, staff, and community desires, including violations of leadership protocols, as well as local judges and prosecutors dismissing the violations and causes of concern brought to them. There has also been a similar lack of regional and state intervention to hold those accountable despite the evidence provided by staff, board members, and community activists. There is also a continual presence of non-community-based legal teams. They seem to support the agenda and desires of certain entities despite an overreach in legal rights and responsibilities. We cannot have this continue to happen. We are desperate. We do not want this district to be dissolved and to be distributed to other school districts. We want Muskegon Heights to stay Muskegon Heights, but something at this point needs to be done to make sure there are those checks and balances in place. Please, I beg of you to come to a town hall meeting that we plan to prepare for. You may email me, contact me, my information is available. Thank you all very much. I appreciate it.
Thank you. We'll now move to the public participation online. Hello, caller, can you hear me? Yes. Hi, thank you. Can you please state your name and where you're calling from, and then your three minutes of public comment can begin?
This is Tracy Owens. I'm calling from Troy. I am a mom of three children in the Troy School District. I have two children with IEPs, one with dyslexia, who is currently in fifth grade and not proficient in reading. I have been advocating for the Troy School District to use a high-quality, structured literacy curriculum. Currently, they are using Lucy Calkins' reading and writing workshop. Last year, they introduced her phonics addition to their curriculum. If you look at the third grade reading results from last year's M-Step and filter it out by children who have disabilities, you will see in Troy, which is highly ranked, that 75% of the children with disabilities in third grade are not proficient in reading. Over the past few years, I have dove deep into reading curriculum and data and research. I have listened to the podcast, "Sold a Story." I have watched the "Right to Read" film. As a parent with a child that is struggling, I couldn't watch that documentary without holding back tears. I understand that Michigan is a local-controlled state in regards to curriculum. However, this model is not working. It does not benefit children like my own, who are trapped in a school that is failing their needs. This state needs to be doing more to ensure that all children are taught how to read. In some areas of the state, like Troy, many parents like myself can advocate until we are blue in the face, and it is not going to do any good. I've asked our superintendent if teachers are taking the letters training. His response was a few. Many parents are spending thousands of dollars to send their children to tutoring, and parents like myself who cannot afford to do that are doing what we can at home to help them. But it's hard to sit here and listen to our state and our local school boards speak of equity when we have these school districts continuing to use whole language or balanced literacy approaches that are failing children. Last year, my daughter's report card at the end of first grade had a comment on it saying from her teacher that she needed to decrease the ineffective letter-by-letter sounding out of words when reading. She learned this method from me because I have to teach her brother phonics work at home. When reaching out to our school superintendent about Lucy Calkins, the response parents get about questioning their curriculum is that they have many highly trained and well-educated individuals in their teaching and learning department, and that these individuals are best suited to determine what is science-based research and what is not. So in other words, they know better, and we as parents should sit down and shut up. I implore this board to look into how they can actually make positive changes for children in Michigan like my son, who are in school districts who refuse to align with the science of reading. Because in the end, it does not matter how much money the state gives to education if the school district is not using the proper curriculum and tools to teach children. It is not going to make a difference. Thank you.
Thank you. Mike, are there any other callers who have registered for public comment today?
Those are all the callers for today.
Thank you so much. This concludes public comment.
Thank you very much, Ms. Evans. Board, we are at the approval of amended minutes of regular and committee of the whole meeting of June 13, 2023. May I please have a motion to approve the amended minutes of the regular and committee of the whole meeting of June 13, 2023? Dr. Pritchett moves. Ms. Lipton seconds. Is there any discussion? Hearing none.
Just a question, because I did not see them. Is there the ability to have like a few copies printed?
They were, they were linked to this. They are, they are attached, and the only-
The service has been so bad, and I didn't read them ahead of time.
If we could make copies right now so that we could vote on this, let's move to the approval of minutes of regular and committee of the whole meeting of August 8, 2023. If we could have a motion on that. Move by Mr. Bullock, if I could have a second. Second by Ms. Lipton. Any discussion? Hearing none. If we could have a roll call vote.
Bullock?
Yes.
Lipton?
Yes.
McMillan?
Yes.
Pritchett?
Yes.
Pugh?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Snyder?
Yes.
And Tilly?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Very good. Thank you. Approval of minutes of the legislative committee meeting of August 3, 2023. Could I have a motion, please? Dr. Pritchett moves. Could I have a second? Mr. Bullock seconds. Any discussion associated therewith?
Is it recorded?
It is. Are the meetings recorded? Not. No.
I'll be voting no. I've had history with, with these meetings I thought were recorded.
Okay, very good. Thank you.
Yeah, how do we, is this the first time we're approving committee minutes?
It is. The feeling was, as I wrote in my email to you, feeling was is that we're doing more work in the legislative committee over the last few years, and we want to document the additional work. We want to share it. It's in the spirit of transparency.
So we should record them, then, yes?
Yeah, how can I know whether or not these are accurate if I'm not at the meeting?
You're, you're free to attend the meeting. We welcome you.
Should we record them?
We'd be happy to record them. Any other discussion? Please.
That's the second time we said we would, so I hope that we will in the future. I'll vote no for now, but if we're recording them, then I will change the way I approach that vote moving forward.
That's fine. Any other discussion on the approval of the August 3 legislative committee meeting Hearing none. If we could have a roll call vote.
Bullock?
Yes.
Lipton?
Yes.
McMillan?
Pass.
Pritchett?
Yes.
Pugh?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Snyder?
No.
Tilly?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you very much, Board. Approval of minutes of the legislative committee meeting of August 31, 2023. We could have a motion, please. Move by the legislative committee chair, Dr. Pritchett. Have a second. Seconded by Ms. Lipton, the former legislative committee chair. Thank you very much. Any, any discussion associated therewith? Going once, twice, thrice, and hearing none. We could have a roll call vote, please, Ms. Evans.
Bullock?
Yes.
Lipton?
Yes.
McMillan?
Yes.
Pritchett?
Yes.
Pugh?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Snyder?
Yes.
And Tilly?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Very good. Thank you. And while we're waiting for, for-
A point of, a point of information. For E, the hot link is incorrect, just so you know. I mean, I don't know if we want to, it goes to the minutes of the legislative committee of August 3, so I don't know, unless my hot link, yeah. So anyway, just-
It does.
Is that right? Or does it go to the, does yours go to the actual agenda, the actual, oh, yeah, to the legislative, right? So I don't know if you get those corrected or something.
Yes, thank you. Well.
Okay. Board, we are at the point in our agenda, while we wait for copies, we're going to move to presentation on Michigan's Perkins Five reauthorization. This presentation will provide information on the Carl D. Perkins Career and Technical Education Act of 2006, as amended by the Strengthening Career and Technical Education for the 21st Century Act Plan. That's the Perkins Five Plan. Presentation will focus on proposed changes for the 2024-2028 Michigan Perkins Five State Plan and upcoming public comment period from September 13, 2023 through October 17, 2023. The purpose of Perkins Five is to develop the academic knowledge, technical skills, and employability skills of secondary school and post-secondary school students who elect to enroll in career and technical education programs. We welcome our presenters, Dr. Michelle Harmala, Deputy Superintendent, Division of P-20 System and Student Transitions, and thank you, Dr. Brian Piles, Director of the Office of Career and Technical Education. This is an informational presentation, and no board action is required. Presenters, welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you. So it is my pleasure to present with Dr. Harmala for the first time and to meet you in person. So nice to see you.
We see each other virtually every day.
Virtually every day, but to see everyone in person. And good to see all of you as well. Thank you for taking time to hear about our upcoming proposed state-determined levels of performance for our Perkins Act. For the board members who are new, I would like to talk about the structure of career and technical education in the state of Michigan. Michigan Department of Education is the eligible agency to administer and receive the Carl Perkins funds, and we administer the secondary component of Carl Perkins. And then our colleagues and friends at the Department of Labor and Economic Opportunity, they deliver the post-secondary component of federal Perkins, working with 32 institutions, 28 of which are community colleges, and four other institutions that qualify to confer When we worked on the Perkins Five Plan, we developed a joint vision between Leo and the MDE. And as you can see on the display, our goal is to create multiple pathways of entry and exit components between our secondary and our post-secondary slash community college programs, so students have ease of access in and out of learning opportunities. We'll be, a strong focus on work-based learning. As you know, one of the components that set a career and technical education program, apart from other educational programs, is that all of our students have a work-based learning experience. And to go out into work, in the workplace, and start to apply their skills and do some of that young adulting, the research shows is so beneficial for all of our students. Many of our programs culminate in a post-secondary recognized credential. We are proud to say that we've reviewed 26 programs through the first four years of Perkins Five, identifying 371 post-secondary and industry-recognized credentials for our students. And that's a landmark shift. And congratulations to our intermediate school districts who partner with us, our Office of Career and Technical Education, and our friends at Labor and Economic Opportunity as we've all come together to lift this effort. And we plan to spend the next four years working on the remaining programs and to develop a modify, develop a review process so that we're staying current and up to date with the needs of our programs and our employers. And it's a strong partnership between our K-12s and our community colleges. The purpose of the Perkins Five State Plan for 2024-28 is to go through, evaluate, and reset our core performance indicators, which we call our SDLPs, which are our state-determined levels of performance. And we are, have elected to maintain the trajectory of working toward our goals in the first four years, as we're halfway there on the secondary and post-secondary side of identifying those credentials and continuing to move forward. The public comment period will open on September 13, and it will culminate on October 17. And individuals in the state of Michigan will have an opportunity to weigh in on the 30-day public comment period via the Michigan Department of Education website, or they can print and submit their comments in writing, or they can call us, and we will mail them a form so that they can then return that form, providing access to everyone. And the public comment period is important for us to gain feedback statewide from all the constituents. Now we're going to look at the secondary state performance levels of performance for our high school students. For 1S1, which is our four-year graduation rate, we proposed, we propose to set the SDLP starting with an average of the two most recent years of performance, which was 95.36%, and raise it 0.1% every year, since our students are already achieving at a very high rate. For our academic performance in reading, language arts, and mathematics, we are going to set the average based on the most recent two years, increase it by 0.1% annually to comply with the requirements of the federal government, as there doesn't seem to be a consistent pattern of increase in reading and math proficiency. The important part for any of these indicators in making sure that we set reasonable expectations for our schools is so that we don't end up in a performance plan state. If the Department of Education ends up with our districts not passing the indicators, we have to do a performance plan to the United States Department of Education. From that point, we cannot change our performance indicators till we exceed what we have set. And so we need to be reasonable in what we set. Also, as part of that process, our funding from the federal government could be reduced. And we would never want to reduce the amount of funding that we're sending to our schools and community colleges to support career and technical education. That applies to all the state-determined levels of performance. Science being a newly tested area, as all of you know, in the state of Michigan, we base that on the pilot test performance and on the observed changes over time for all students. The SDLP for 2S3 was consistent with the pilot test percentages, but increases 2% a year based on improvements between 2021 and 2022 for all students. The SDLP increases more rapidly than for the others because of the computing the baseline. We are limited to the pilot test year. Proposed SDLPs, based on observed increases in pilot test year data for all students. There are three more state-determined levels of performance for our secondary high school students. You may recall, if you were on the board during the COVID-19 pandemic, it was anticipated that employment and post-secondary enrollment would decrease in 2020, 2021. Therefore, Michigan held public comments to reduce the SDLPs for placement for the 2020, 21, and 21, 22 years. The actual placement rate did not decline in 2021, 22 as much as anticipated and returned to nearly pandemic levels by 21, 22, which we were pleased that our students had those opportunities. Therefore, 3S1 placement rates appear to have been rebounded to pre-pandemic levels, and based on historical performance, we are going to set those at 0.1% since the SDLP is already very high. And you can see the number of percent of students who are meeting that indicator. Looking down to non-traditional program concentration, we base our average on the last two years of performance and the proposed increase of a quarter percent each year for three of the years. The proposed increase was based on observed averages of 0.7 from 2019 to 2022, ignoring the pandemic year, and also the growth that we experienced under Perkins Four. And so our research consultants take a longitudinal look at how our students are doing in relationship to these indicators. Program quality, attain recognized post-secondary credential. This is what I mentioned earlier, with the 371 identified post-secondary recognized credentials, students can earn in 26 of our career and technical education programs. We are proposing for this SDLP that we base it on the most two years, recent two years of, years of performance, and the proposed increase is 2% a year based on the calculation of expected increase in the number of CTE programs that will have approved credentials over the next four years and the number of concentrators in those CTE program areas. And we are on track to complete between seven and nine more CTE programs during the 24, 25 school year, and we're really excited about that, providing those opportunities for our young people. When we look at the proposed post-secondary state-determined levels of performance, you're going to notice a change. There is a difference in the way that we've been calculating the state-determined levels of performance between secondary and post-secondary. The post-secondary levels of performance are calculated with our colleagues and friends over in the Department of Labor and Economic Opportunity. Currently, post-secondary is collecting aggregate data, which means they're getting a single number for each one of the SDLPs from each of their 32 institutions. So at the Department of Education, we collect every single student, and we do the calculation. The community colleges provide us with an aggregate percentage, and they are going to change that in the coming years of Perkins. And so in beginning of fiscal year 2024, they will begin collecting student-level data, giving the transition to student-level data the potential for difference in post-secondary methodology that was previously being used to aggregate the SDLPs between the 32 funded institutions. The staff at Leo have proposed achievable SDLPs. I'll bring that screen up now for you. And therefore, they're looking at what they believe, based on their experience, will most likely have a number that community colleges will be able to attain. A quick example would be if we start thinking about 32 institutions, submit 32 numbers. So they take the total, divide it by 32, and this is the percent that we get. It's like 32 individual students. Starting in 2024, they're going to submit each student and their independent performance. So if you think of, say, two community colleges, and let's say that one community college reported on 10 students, one of our smaller community college programs, and five of those students met the, met the criteria for the SDLP and five didn't, they would report that 50% of their students were successful. Another community college that may have 100 students in their CTE program reports that 20% of their students met the SDLP, with 20 students meeting it and 80 students not meeting it. Under our current methodology, we- we would take 50% plus 20% divided by two, and we report to the federal government that 35% of our students are meeting that indicator. Once we start to collect student-level data, then if we look at the five students who met the indicator at College One, and we look at the 20, at the 20 students who met it at College Two, and we take those 25 students who met the indicator, but divide it by the total number of students of 110, we will now be reporting 23%. So, there could be some significant swings within the data. Also, we believe that there's going to be a learning curve that all of us experience in a change in data systems. And most of us in this room have probably experienced those data changes in how we learn and how we adjust. And so, that is why, when you look at the grid up on the display, you'll see that 37% of the students are currently meeting their post-program placement. And we believe that 33.45% in fiscal year 2024, and that number will go up as the years pass on. The same for earned recognized post-secondary credential and for non-traditional program concentration. So, we're going to go from having like a denominator of 32 to thousands. And that could really change the data. The timeline for Perkins Five is Dr. Harmala and I are presenting to you today. We have our public comment opening September 13th, closing on October 17th. Then, from October to November, we're going to compile the public comment. And then, in the winter, we plan to come back and present the state plan draft, including the public comment to the state board, with presenting the Perkins Five State Plan to the United States Department of Education in the spring of 2024. If you have questions regarding this presentation after today, reach out to myself or to the supervisor, Dr. Jill Kroll in the Office of Career and Technical Education. And what questions may I answer for you?
Thank you to Dr. Piles, Dr. Harmala. Ms. Lipton, to you.
Thank you very much. This is really very, very interesting. I just have a couple of specific questions that hopefully you can help me with. On slide three, you mentioned that there are few four-year universities that confer two-year degree. I knew that there were. Which ones are they?
If I may invite Mr. Keenan Wade, the manager, to come on up, please. This is my friend and colleague, Mr. Keenan Wade. He's the manager over at the Department of Labor and Economic Opportunity for our post-secondary recognized programs. And if I may also acknowledge Dr. Yunchen Yi, who is a research consultant in the Office of Career and Technical Education here, who works on this, all this data that I get to present. So, I'd just like to recognize her as well.
Okay, so the question is, we do have a few universities who can confer two-year degrees.
Yes.
Northern Ferris, Grand Valley State University, they can confer those degrees. So, they have community college status. Northern Michigan as well.
The Northern, Ferris State, Grand Valley, and what was the?
Ferris, yeah.
So, it's three?
Yeah.
Three of them, okay. Okay. And is, I'm just, I'm just curious. Is the application process, in other words, when they operate and confer a two-year degree, do they operate the way that the community college do in terms of open enrollment? Or do they operate in terms of admission more in line with the four-year university?
Yeah, it's more in line with the four-year university.
Okay, okay, thank you. I appreciate that. I just didn't know that. And that was very interesting. Thank you. I'm sorry.
If I may.
Please.
A point of clarification. We have 32 institutions that can confer those. So, three of those are universities. And the fourth one is?
So, we have one tribal college.
The tribal college, okay. And the name of the tribal college is?
Bay.
Bay Denai. Bemals, yep. So, that would be the fourth one. It's not part of the traditional community college system.
Yes, yes, thank you. I appreciate that very much.
Yeah, please, go ahead.
Thank you. On slide number eight, it was really more in terms of a definition. I just want to make sure I understand the definitions that you're using. Post-program placement, I assume that that is the student has the credential and we're tracking the placement, an employer placement that matches or is akin to the degree that they got? Is that how you're defining post-program placement?
In addition, it's also if they're in a related post-secondary training program, if they're in the military, if they're, if they're working in their field, as you had mentioned, there are several indicators for our post-program placement that we count.
Okay, so it would also include a student that has received an associate's degree, let's say, and then is transferring credits and moving on to a four-year university to extend, let's say, a baccalaureate?
Absolutely.
In that, okay.
Absolutely.
Thank you. I, that's, that's.
And as well as community service, like a Vista student that goes on or Peace Corps as well.
And what about AmeriCorps?
Yeah.
Okay, so any of those?
Yes.
Okay. Oh, that, right, that require a post-secondary credential. Okay. The, also on that slide, just question about the definition regarding program quality attained recognized post-secondary credential. Would that, would that include the requirement of the student to pass some kind of a test? Or some sort of, I guess, really test?
In some instances, the agencies that grant those credentials do require a test. But the test isn't always necessarily a paper and pencil test. It can also be a performance test because we want to know that a welder can weld. And so, there's a variety of ways within those 371 credentials that are granted by agencies outside of state government and the requirements that they have. And many of them do have a level of assessment at the end.
I don't know the exact number, but my understanding is that it's a significant, it's a, it's a pretty high percentage that requires some kind of an assessment in order to finally confer the credential. Do you, do you have a percentage? I mean, I don't think it's 100%, but it's, it's pretty high.
So, Dr. Ye?
I think.
Have a seat, Ms. Thank you.
Yes, the definition for the 5S1, the recognized post-secondary credentials could include not only pursuing like the associate degree, like education degree, including the associate degree, bachelor degree, or even one or two-year certificates from the community college. Also, the industry-recognized credentials and some licensure from the state government agencies. And also, so the industry-recognized credentials are the approved credentials through our career path regentist from the Office of Career and Technical Education. So, that could include a bunch of like certificates or certifications.
So, when you see the variety of those, we don't collect data on which each, which of those require a performance assessment or they provide an end-of-course assessment. Or as Dr. Ye had mentioned, a 15-hour certificate or a 30-hour certificate from the community colleges. Each one of those courses probably had tests within it.
Yes.
So, it's unfortunately a number that I don't have.
No, no, that's, that's completely understandable. I was just curious to know if you knew how many of that? Because that could potentially impact the percentages you're getting because many students have test anxiety, particularly in a population that I deal with.
Yeah, so our data, one part of our data, like a post-secondary credential, like educational awards data are from SEPI, from, I cannot remember SEPI, but the state agency who collects all education datas. And the recognized industry credentials are collected through our CTE information system. So, we, in our information system, like each student's going to report whether they have been obtained any industry-approved credentials through that system.
Right, thanks. Thank you, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, just, just a couple more questions, but thank you. This is very helpful. On slides nine and 10, I do, I think what you're doing makes a great deal of sense. You know, just in terms of managing expectations. And certainly, when you do a data change, you do have to expect that there's going to be a learning curve. My question is, and I do think that the new, the new way of collecting the data makes a great deal of sense. I deal with a population of kids that oftentimes are going on to community college through the Promise Home programs. And so, that makes a lot of sense to do it that way. My question is, what is the reason for the data change? Is that something that the state decided? Or is that something that is a Perkins Five federal requirement?
Well, Perkins Five is really data-driven. So, there's an emphasis on robust data.
Yeah.
So, that federal kind of demand that you have more robust data, that's why we're making that transition to get the participant-level data, which will be more robust, more true.
So, it's a federal requirement or at least a federal expectation?
And also, just internally, we want to continuously improve as a state with the data that we get. So, it's time for us to get that student-level data.
For sure. I think it will also allow the department to take a look at, you know, comparisons within, within deliverers of programs as well as programs themselves, too. So, I, so that makes a ton of sense. Okay, on slide number 10, where you talked about post-program placement, I just want to make sure I understand, within what timeframe are you talking about? Is it within, like immediately after receiving the post-secondary credential or within? The reason why I ask is that, at least in the population of students that, that I'm working with, oftentimes, getting the post-secondary credential is really valuable. But employers are also looking for quality of internships and things that are sort of outside of the program's control, work experience, things like that. So, when you're looking at post-program placement, I'm just curious, are you, is there some grace period within which the student is getting placed that you look at? Or is it immediately upon graduation? Because that, that number may, may be a little bit low, just.
So, in Perkins Five, you'll see a lot of references to WEOWA, Workforce Innovation Opportunity Act. So, it mirrors.
Say that one more time, please, again.
WEOWA.
Thank you.
Workforce Innovation Opportunity Act.
I appreciate that, thank you.
But it mirrors the way data is reported and tracked in WEOWA. So, there is a lag in the data that you get for those postprograms. So, if you look at second quarter after exit, like the student isn't there for a couple of semesters, whether they dropped out or they graduated or whatever. So, there will be a lag in data.
There's a little bit of a grace period, right? After the, yeah, okay, that's what I thought. I just wanted to, just, just to, to make sure that that's the case. Oh, and then the last, the last question is, it's more just food for thought in terms of things to look at. So, you know that the, the state is unveiling the Michigan Achievement Scholarship, which has a pretty robust two-year component to it. And it may be interesting to look at the effect of the Michigan Achievement Scholarship on some of these, these data points. I know that Perkins Five is a federal requirement, but I'm just thinking that in our quest to increase post-secondary attainment amongst our population, the Michigan Achievement Scholarship, the two-year component in particular, I think is going to be a game changer, at least in terms of associate's degree attainment. And so, I think it might be interesting to just sort of take a look at some of these data points in lieu of the rollout of Michigan Achievement Scholarship, which this, this current class now, starting, will be eligible for. So, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Lipton. Ms. Snyder?
It was very lengthy, so I'm going to try to be concise and slow it down a little bit. But, so my understanding is Leo's making a data reporting level change. And that Perkins Five funds are at risk within K through 12 because of that student-level data that will be reported differently now. That tells me that K through 12 dollars for CTE will flow less through public education in K through 12 and more through maybe a new bureaucratic body called MyLeap for post-secondary certifications under the new Leo change. Am I, am I making accurate inferences?
No.
Okay.
The CTE at this point is the province of MDE. It's not in the Governor's Executive Order 2023-6. And it is not slated to become part of MyLeap on December 1st, 2023.
No, MyLeap is, my understanding and part of that is that 60 by 30 goal.
60 by 30 goal is one thing. The CTE is another.
But if we're taking money from the Perkins based on how we report student-level data for K through 12 CTE programming for students that would have a set of skills before they graduate high school, and then we're looking to a new bureaucratic body for post-secondary opportunities like we're talking about right here, how does that all pan out? Does that mean we're taking money from K through 12?
No.
Okay. I'm just asking questions based on what I'm hearing.
Those are, those are, those are good questions. They deserve to be asked. I'm giving you a direct answer.
Okay.
There, there is no indication that MyLeap will adversely affect CTE at all.
Okay, more direct question then. Why would we change? Why would a Labor Economic Opportunity change the way they report student-level data to the extent that it puts Perkins funds at risk? What advantage does that give our students in the state of Michigan?
Okay, so one component to this, if you look at the longitudinal data, is the colleges really want to know what happens to the student after they graduate, after the student graduates or leaves. So, there's that employment component as well. So, you start getting, getting that type of data when you start doing the student-level data. In terms of the program being, dollars being at risk, that is like just a federal protocol where if you don't meet 90% of your targets, you potentially could go into a performance improvement plan. And that's what we're trying to avert by just being conservative on those numbers. In all likelihood, we're going to exceed those numbers. But because of this variable that we're not sure how it's going to land when you start chopping up that data differently, that's why we're a little bit conservative on it. But in all likelihood, we're going to blow those, those numbers.
That's good to hear. And I think there's more discussion in the long run about it just because what I am seeing in the presentation is that the academic performance is sincerely concerning enough that we're asking those questions and then considering the federal laws and the implications of academic performance at this point in time and how that impacts CTE and then other things that are happening at the same time. So, we'll just keep having the conversation.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Snyder. Please, Dr. Piles.
And also, I'd like to add in that if we go into a component ever of having to do a performance plan with the federal government, the actual reduction in federal funds is many fiscal year steps down the road. And I can say from my experience here working with the counterparts of the federal government, that is not what they are looking to do. I believe that the federal government is going to praise this step because we are going to take a deeper dive into the data and get a better look at how our students in Michigan. in Michigan across our community college systems are performing.
Okay. Thank you, Dr. Piles. Any other questions for our four presenters?
Oh, and just one correction. We were talking about those four-year universities. Somebody said Grand Valley, actually, it's Lake Superior State, Ferris, and Northern are the three, just to make that correction for you.
A Mills?
And Bay Mills is a tribal comment.
Tribal comment.
Yeah.
Very good. Thank you. Any other questions for the good of the group? Once, twice, thrice? Hearing none. Presenters, thank you very much. We appreciate you. Thank you.
Thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you. Board, we are going to move back to our June 13 regular and Committee of the Whole Meeting Minutes as amended. May I once again, please, have a motion to approve the amended meeting minutes of the Regular and Committee of the Whole Meeting of June 13, 2023?
Support?
Moved by Mr. McMillan. Do I have a second?
Yes.
Second by Mr. Bullock. I feel like there should be like a, some sort of a kumbaya moment here. Is there any discussion associated with the amended minutes? Hearing none. If we could have a roll call vote, Ms. Evans, with, with appreciation for Ms. Justice for getting the meeting minutes for us. Thank you. Please.
Bullock? Lipton?
Yes.
McMillan?
Yes.
Pritchett?
Yes.
Pew?
Yes.
Robinson? Oh, he stepped out, sorry. Snyder?
Yes.
And Tilly?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you very much. Next item on today's agenda is a presentation and approval of the State Board of Education meeting schedule for 2024. The regular meetings are scheduled for the second Tuesday of each month. The board's work session is scheduled for the third Tuesday in May. The schedule avoids conflicts with holidays. Board is being asked to approve the State Board of Education meeting schedule as presented today. May I please have a motion associated with that 2024 calendar? Motion to approve by Ms. Tilly. Do I have a second? Second by Ms. Lipton. Any discussion? Hearing none. If I could have a roll call vote, please.
Bullock?
Yes.
Lipton?
Yes.
McMillan?
Yes.
Pritchett?
Yes.
Pew?
Yes.
Robinson has still stepped out. Snyder?
Yes.
And Tilly?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you very much. The next item on today's agenda is about one of the coolest places on earth. It's a presentation and approval of Camp Tuzmahida's spending plan for fiscal year 2023, 2024. This presentation will provide an overview of the August 16, 2023 Blind Trust Fund Committee meeting. Information and description of the budget for the fiscal year 2023, 2024 will be provided. Welcome our presenters. Dr. Michelle Harmela, Deputy Superintendent, Division of P-20 System and Student Transitions. Roxanne Balfour, Manager of the Office of Special Education Low Incidence Outreach. Ms. Jill Teagarden, Director of Camp Tuzmahida, and...
Pamela McGinnister, the Business Manager.
Very good. Thank you so much. Welcome, presenters. There will be, there will be no test on the presentation, but there will be a request to vote on the budget. Thank you. Please.
Okay, we're going to start with the video, and I'm going to ask for help here. I'll start here and-
Enjoy the lake on a sunny day, scale the climbing tower, or hike the trails. Camp T, since 1974. Camp T is a 300-acre camp in Greenville surrounded by a lush oak and pine forest. A stream runs through the forest on a rainy day at camp. Campers walk the trails with white keens, using their senses to explore and interact with nature. On rainy days, Camp T offers bright yellow rain jackets for campers to wear while walking the trails together at camp. On sunny days, campers enjoy the lake. A fun activity is jumping into the swimming area and making a big splash. Campers also navigate the lake in canoes and paddle boats while a lifeguard supervises from a kayak. Campers, all wearing life jackets, play in the water next to the dock. Camp staff, campers, and even a guide dog ride in paddle boats around the lake, enjoying the sunshine, while the lifeguard jokingly splashes them with his kayak paddle. Next to the dock, a small swimming area is roped off so campers can stay close to the shore. Campers enjoy lots of fun activities at camp, including a recent soda bottle rocket project. Camp T Director Jill Teagarden first explains the steps while holding a two-liter soda bottle. Campers construct their rockets in a pavilion at camp while volunteers supervise. Campers attach colorful wings to help propel their rockets into the air. Duct tape is a common tool, and campers work together to check and revise their handwork. Campers walk along a trail to the sports field. Camp Assistant Tyler Mirren leads the way with a white cane. Campers sit on a bench at the edge of the field as Jill prepares a bottle rocket for liftoff. A camper pours water into the bottle. Jill, wearing safety glasses, places the cap on the bottle in the middle of the field. A camper, also wearing safety glasses, pumps air into the bottle as Jill demonstrates how to use the pump. Jill assists another camper, who's holding a long string that is connected to the rocket. The camper yanks the string, and the rocket shoots straight into the air, spraying water downward. Campers observe excitedly as each rocket launches into the air. One rocket reaches a record altitude of 67 feet. At the archery range, volunteers and camp staff assist campers with their bows as they get ready to practice their archery skills. Jill demonstrates how to hold the arrow and place it along the bow. Campers shoot their arrows and pull them out of the targets. They practice their form as they pull back their bows to shoot. Several campers wearing safety harnesses make their way up a wooden climbing tower. They use their sense of touch to feel for handholds and footholds that are attached to the tower.
So easy.
One camper approaches the top of the 40-foot tower, which is in a clearing surrounded by trees. A camper wearing a green hoodie starts making his way in a straight line up the wall. He then switches his strategy to move sideways for better handholds. Another camper, who is halfway up the tower, slides his hand over the surface of the wall, feeling for the perfect grip. Campers gather around Tyler Mirren, who's leading a physical education activity in Oak Recreation Center. Campers follow Tyler's instructions as they do jumping jacks and leg stretches. In the recreation center, campers also practice goal ball. They take turns rolling the ball toward the other end of the court, while other campers dive to block the ball from going into the net. Goal ball is specifically designed for athletes with visual impairments. Players use their sense of hearing to track and defend against a ball with bells inside, aiming to score by rolling it into the opponent's neck. One camper rolls the ball and makes it into the net.
Even, he's even.
That was hard. It's like it's in slow motion.
Easier in slow motion than, than in fast ball.
Faster, and we're good.
Another camper rolls the ball, but it's blocked by his opponent at the other end of the court. The opponent shoots the ball back and makes it into the net.
What was your favorite thing about Camp T?
All the swimming, basically everything.
Oh, I think we were playing this, those people, making friends and doing plays and having fun.
Going in the water, going in the boats, having great dinners. I really liked playing the piano.
Another fun activity at Camp T is fishing. Jill attaches a lure to a camper's line and shows him how to reel in the line while holding the pole. When the camper hooks a fish, camp staff help him reel in his line off the dock at camp, and the camper poses with the small fish he has caught. Campers also enjoy canoeing on Flanagan Lake, two campers in each canoe. Teamwork is required to move the canoe forward. Campers need to row in tandem to move in a straight line. Campers also enjoy riding in paddle boats, propelling the boat forward by pedaling in a circular motion. A volunteer navigates the lake in a kayak. Campers fish from the dock as a camp counselor and camper ride in a paddle boat together nearby. A camper poses with the small fish he has caught.
What would you tell someone who's never been to Camp T before? How would you describe it?
It's like really fun. Like, you should totally come. It's like really fun.
What would you tell to someone who's never been to Camp T before?
In the beginning, looking, you worry, just like me. But when you, but when you move on with your Camp T journey, you worry, we've come, and you'll have so much fun at Camp T.
The Camp T logo features illustrations of a tent and trees. Camp T, since 1974.
That's terrific.
How can I not have the best job in the world, right? And that is an example, if you will, of performance-based evaluation, right? We can see what all of those campers can do. So I had the luxury of meeting this team in August for the Camp T Board trustee meeting, and I learned a lot and got to see that video for the first time. So in our presentation, Roxanne Balfour is going to say a few words about the video, then we'll move to Jill Teagarden, who's going to share the annual report, and then Pam McGinnister is going to bring up the end with the budget.
So I heard a few comments during this video. For those of you who don't know, Camp T was a part of the school for the blind in 1974. The superintendent developed that camp. And it was made for the blind visually impaired, and that's what this video demonstrated is how these kids today are still enjoying it. We also serve Deaf Heart of Hearing now as an outreach project, since the school's no longer there. So we will be incorporating some of the DHH components, and they are in the booklet as well. But I want to first point out, too, that many of you shook your head and made comments because you were there and you experienced it. And I am so appreciative of you taking the time during your planning meeting this spring to come and see all that we had to offer, because Nikki herself, Snyder's been there, she gets it. She's our trustee, and we always appreciate the support she gives. Rory Gooden, who just is passing out the book that Jill's going to cover, too. He is our graphic designer, and he is the one that actually did the video for us. You saw a lot of accessibility on there. That's what we promote ourselves and pride ourselves on, is that we have ASL for the sign language needs, as well as the visual descriptors. Because the sighted people, we see many things, but if someone in the audience is blind or visually impaired, they don't see what we see, and we have to describe that for them. So that's why you heard those visi, visual descriptors. We try to do that in all of our productions, so. And Jill, you wanted to go over the booklet everyone just got? Sure, I'm going to take some time to go over the annual report. I think that everybody has one now. I won't spend time going over everything, but I do want to highlight a few things within the report itself. On page three, we have an overview of the usage from camp. You can see that we've increased our, I feel like we're, we're back in full swing again. There was a little downtime. I know with COVID, where we're doing things virtually, and we've been back in person, and we still do some virtual items as well. But definitely in-person is back to normal, I would say. So our participants' and usage has gone up over the last couple of years, thankfully. One thing I do want to point out is that the type of groups that we have out, we're branching out more to a lot of our school groups, specifically school groups for our deaf, hard of hearing, and blind visually impaired. So that was one of the goals with myself coming aboard a few years ago, was to try to focus in on the school groups and education groups that are primarily deaf, hard of hearing, and blind visually impaired. So I, I feel like we're heading in the right direction as far as that goes. We do service other youth education programs. You'll see some, like, scout groups on here. Just a few, though, that aren't Girl Scouts, Boy Scouts, only a few that aren't specifically focused on the group that we service. So I'm happy to say that we're heading in the right direction with that. And one of the groups that we have been working with, I think that's kind of on our next page, too, is our Goal Ball group. We, you guys had the, some of you had the experience of actually playing Goal Ball out at camp when you visited in May. We are working with the Michigan Blind Athletic Association. We kind of team up with them. They are able to use our facility at camp for practices, and in exchange, they come out and help us with Goal Ball clinics and youth clinics. So it's a great collaboration that we have with MBAA, Michigan Blind Athletic Association. And it's a great way, a lot of those participants are visually impaired themselves, and they're wonderful role models to our students that come out. This past weekend, they had a little gathering. They had six students out. They're trying to develop a youth team so that they can go out and compete nationally around, along, around the nation. So they did a training, one of their first trainings that they've done, that they've done with the youth. So they're trying to collaborate together and create a team so that they can go out and have some teams around the state, so, and the nation. They're kind of the, the reason they're there is to help be good role models for our students, but also to, for our students to have good experiences. So for a lot of students, that's the only place they'll be able to experience a sport that's specifically for them, and it's important for them to have that opportunity. Just kind of paging through here, some activities you saw in our video, we incorporate those into a lot of our programs with our family camps, and our specifically just-for-student camps. This is just one of the activities we did with Bottle Rockets, but we, they design ski slopes in the winter and acorn shoots. They pretend to be squirrels and- slopes in the winter and acorn shoots, they pretend to be squirrels, and they, they make acorn shoots, egg drops. I was a science teacher prior to coming into this role, so I, science is a passion of mine, so I try to incorporate that into our camp activities, and it's just a natural way for the kids to have fun as well, and they might learn a little something along the way as well. Independent living skills, I'm on to page nine and 10. You can see some of our students here. We incorporate independent living skills into everything, even though the kids may not know they're learning something or realize they're learning, like it's an education thing. We're incorporating it into, sometimes we cook meals, we cook desserts, they learn how to fold clothes, how to tie shoes, simple tasks that you and I may take for granted, but we give them specific ways to make it a little bit easier, adapt it so that they can be successful on their own. So independent living skills are always a part of our programming when we design programs for our students. Next two pages are just activities. You saw some of them in the videos. Just the experience of being at camp, and they're always learning skills, so building confidence, whether it's them climbing the wall, or for me, my favorite thing is when a kid catches their fish for the first time at camp. I probably say that every year, but it never gets old for me. Just the smile on their face when they catch that fish, and some kids, we spend a little extra time out there just to make sure that they can catch, catch their first fish because they have all these high hopes, and finally, we can land that fish, and they can, um, hold up their photo, and we can send photos to their parents.
We just need to work on hooking that worm that many of them have told me standing there. I don't hook worms. I'm like, okay.
So we can start, we start with the, um, holding the worm first, right? Holding the worm, so that's a big, and sometimes they'll just pinch it with, so sometimes it takes a couple visits for them to get to the point of baiting their own hook, but it still doesn't get old, even when I have to bait the hook. Moving on to our archery is another thing, confidence builder. Just for the kids, I don't know if you got, you guys didn't shoot archery when you're out there, so next time in the spring when you're out again, we'll make sure you have the opportunity, but the sound of the thwack, I don't know, I'm an archer, my kids are archers, so just that sound, and the kids, when they hear that reaction, it's exciting for them to see the smile on their faces. We do have some deaf and hard of hearing programs that we do as well, so on 17 and 18, we have family programs for them. We do have, we're planning on doing a summer program just for students in the summer. We still have some accommodations that we meet for them, but they have just as much fun at camp as our BBI students. We do have a little highlight here of you guys visiting the State Board of Education visit, so I want to really thank you. Yes, you did, of course. I was so happy that you guys took us up on the offer to come out to camp and experience camp, and I know that it's, it's on the calendar for next year, so hopefully, those of you who didn't make it out, you can make it out this time around, and you'll be able to experience some really cool things at camp again. So there's some highlights there of you guys playing some Goal Ball. Collaborations are always a big part of what we do at camp. We really can't do really cool programs without some of our collaborative efforts, so we've been working with Bureau of Services for Blind Persons, CSVP. They've done multiple programs out where we collaborate with them, with a lot of their high school age youth. John Ball Zoo, they'll actually be out again this weekend, getting kids some hands-on experience. We tell them who they're servicing, and they're planning on bringing out some, some animals that the kids can truly engage with, to feel and touch and hear, so we're excited about that. The Kalamazoo Institute of Arts came out and did an art project with the camp this summer. That was fun to have them. We have, Intermediate School District is one of the school districts that we work with, actually wrote a grant through MDE LIO, and were able to come out, they bring out a pretty good-sized group of blind visually impaired students out to camp so they could have a day trip. The Michigan Blind Athletic Association I mentioned, Michigan Department of Natural Resources, we did an excursion this past spring out to the Outdoor Adventure Center in Detroit, and that was a blast. It's very hands-on learning area, if you have not been there, take some time to visit it, and our kids really enjoyed experiencing that center. The Michigan Braille and Talking Library, they were out for one of our summer camps, working with us. We went out to Opportunities Unlimited for the Blind to work at one of their camps and do some projects with their students. And then we did a site visit to Waverly Middle School, where we actually set up a Goal Ball court. One of our campers who has reached out to us and asked if, we, actually, he didn't even ask, we kind of just, it led to us going out to setting up a Goal Ball experience for his PE class. So we set up the Goal Ball court, we taught them how to play Goal Ball. He's the only visually impaired student in his class, I think maybe even in the school, and that was a pretty cool experience for him, to be equal playing field with his peers. So we, they were under blindfold, played Goal Ball, and it was a pretty cool experience. They actually left it up for a couple weeks after that and continued a little unit on Goal Ball, and even had more experiences after our little demo that we did at, at the school. So again, collaboration is important. Moving on to our nature center, page 23 and 24. This should be wrapped up here in the fall. Super excited about this, again, with my science passion. It's a pretty cool space, or it will be, we don't have it, we don't have, we haven't moved in yet, but they're still working on finishing it. But our, our hope is to have hands-on displays the kids can touch and feel. If you know of anybody that has mount, animal mounts, we're looking for native species. So if you know of anyone that's getting rid of any squirrels or whatever mount, fish mounts, anything like that, so our kids can touch and feel and experience them up close and personal, just let me know, because we'd love to have them.
We heard Dr. Rice that you're also interested, when we do have an opening day, to come out and help us celebrate that, so we're hoping we can get it on your schedule as soon as we know.
I would, I would love to do that. I can't vouch for the squirrels, but, but I can for the squirrelly.
So yeah, the nature center will hopefully be opening here soon, or hands-on, we'll have a bookknit area, outdoor learning area outside where we have picnic tables, just to get kids an opportunity to experience and learn about some of the cool things that Michigan has to offer related to nature. Moving on to our next page, some things that we've added this year besides the nature center, you can see some pictures here, we've done some work in the waterfront, trying to update our PFDs, personal rotation devices, and the canopy. We finally got Goal Ball nut this past year. Basic thing, our generator finally came in, which was backordered for a little while. We did some upgrades on the archery range, so it's a little safer, it is safer for archers. Water softeners, thermostats, all the things that are not as exciting, but they're just as important for our camp to function and run. Trying to think of other things we have, anyway. Some things we have planned for this upcoming year, we have, our 50th anniversary is next year, so camp was started in 1974, so next year's a big year for us. We're starting to plan some anniversary celebrations. We'll have an alumni picnic, which actually, the last time we did an alumni picnic, that led us to acquiring a couple of new staff members. Tyler and Leanne Mayer are now on board with us. They actually visited our alumni picnic a couple of years ago, and now are employees of camp and help plan our programs. I think some of you had the opportunity to meet them when they were out, when you were out at camp as well. So the alumni picnic, we have a community celebration planned, we have some special student camps, some family camps planned, we have some teacher training, a teacher training right now planned, to have teachers come out and do some learning. I just recently finished up a forest bathing, forest therapy training, so I, my plan is to incorporate some of that into our programming. If you're not familiar with forest therapy, it's a guided outdoor wellness experience or practice that invites people to engage with the outdoors in a personal way, I'll just put it that way. So it was a Japanese practice that started back in the 1980s, and it was a pretty cool experience for me to attend that training, and I'm eager to share that with not only my colleagues, but also with the students who visit camp, allow them to get that experience as well. We also have a horseback riding event planned, we did one of those this past summer, which was really exciting, and I, lots of plans, lots of exciting things happening for our 50th anniversary, and I can say that I can't, can't do any of it without the staff that we have, so we have our staff and our volunteers recognized on page 27 and 28 of our book. So they're very important for the functioning of camp and for campers to be able to come in and enjoy the experience, as well as all the volunteers that we have to make things happen, so. That's it for our annual report, I hope you enjoyed it.
And now the budget, which makes it all happen, right?
That's right.
And Board, you should have a copy of the budget in the back in the drawing room, and Pam McGinnister is going to take you through that.
Okay, so for the budget, for the 24 budget, the total is $600,000 for the camp. The first category there is the salary and benefits. So our camp director, our camp consultant, and our camp assistant, the LIO absorbs the cost for their salary and benefits, so that's why there's a zero there. And then for the operating cost section, that's just our day-to-day costs to run the camp and maintain the camp. I won't go over every item there, but some of the higher-dollar items there, our food service provided by Greenville Public Schools, they come out and support our camp activities with the food and our maintenance supplies and replacement parts. Those are our routine things that we do. Couple of new initiatives we have for 24 is we're going to do some signage improvements around the camp and the nature center, and we're going to have an initiative for our washouts, we're going to keep some crushed concrete on hand so we can have better maintenance of the campground. And then down to our equipment piece, one of our major purchases for this year will be a multi-function utility vehicle so that our maintenance crew can better maintain the camp. So we're looking at purchasing something maybe in the John Deere category, and also dishwasher. And we won't have any major projects for the renovation and repair section for this year. As Jill mentioned in her presentation, we will be wrapping up, hopefully, the nature center in the next couple of months with some funds that we encumbered from prior years, but we will be looking at making some major renovation and repairs to our existing facilities. One big one is the Roth, the historical log cabin that's out there at the camp, doing a whole new upgrade to the lighting to make it upgraded to LED, and also a new roof on that facility. Our electrical shed, we're going to look at putting a new roof on that facility, getting flooring for our new nature center, our new doors for our nature center, and there was some HVAC upgrades, we're looking at an air exchanger for our kitchen, and more ceiling and lighting upgrades in our white pine facility, fireplace, which is currently not functional, we're looking at getting that up and running, and the tamarack roof, getting that replaced, and the jack pine pavilion, getting a new roof on that facility. And we're also looking at getting better internet service out between our tamarack and elm facilities, so we're going to be, we're looking now at some quotes for getting some trenching work done, so we can get some new wiring out there. And we're also looking at, basically supporting a lot of the initiatives that Jill talked about for the programs and activities for the kids, making some purchases in those regards, such as picnic tables, filling up our nature center, as Jill said, with taxidermy and different science supplies and materials, and also supporting her initiative with the 50-year anniversary and alumni picnic. And so then we have travel to keep our director well-trained in running the camp there. And so, yeah, the total budget here for fiscal year '24 is $600,000, so I thank you for your attention to the budget.
Thank you very much. Thank you, our presenters. Board members, any questions? Any comments? May I ask the presenters, have they, have they ever seen as agile a board member as they saw in May on the, on the rock climbing wall?
It was impressive, that's for sure. I'd like to see more of you try it, though.
Well, more of us need to put ourselves out there a little bit. Whether we need to climb that, that rock wall is a different story, but there are a lot of ways to put yourself in positions that are unfamiliar, that, that help you have greater understanding of other people who live that on a daily basis. And that's really, I think that's the spirit, whether you're, you're on the wall or playing Goal Ball or walking that wire, you know what I'm referring to, going rock by rock on, holding on to that. One way or the other, you're, you're doing something that, that may be uncomfortable, may be unfamiliar, may help you develop some measure of sympathy, if not precisely empathy, for what other people do. Thank you. If there are no questions or comments, a motion would be great.
Motion to approve the budget for.
Camp Tuzmahito.
Yeah, Camp T. For 2024, or is it 2023, 24?
All right, so we have, we have a motion by Mr. McMillan, support by Dr. Pugh. Any questions? Hearing none, if we could do a roll call vote.
Bullock? Lipton? McMillan? Pritchett? Pugh? Robinson? Snyder? And Tilly? Motion carries.
Very good. Thank you, presenters. Have a great day, great school year. We'll see you in Greenville.
Thank you, everyone.
Take care, thank you. Madam President, we are at your report.
Hopefully, I'll be pretty quick here. I do want to start with the, there was a public comment from someone with Muskegon Heights, and I have been paying attention to that, and would like to talk about if there's opportunities for visits. I know that some of the community people have asked that a few times. Had the opportunity to visit for the first day of school Detroit, in Detroit at the school at Mary Grove, and to see happy students. I think the most exciting part for me is the students were walking up, and they weren't as happy as they were until they saw like that teacher or that educator that was greeting them at the door, and it was just like a welcoming, just hug, and it was just so exciting to see the students walk in for the new year, but more exciting to see them get excited, to see the educators that they left behind that previous year. Had the opportunity to also go to Waverly High School on their first day of school, which was also exciting. Was invited to visit with Vice President Kamala Harris as a member of, as the president of the State Board of Education, and there with other elected officials across the country. Of course, I was like a student on the first day of school for that. And just wanted to mention that October 1st through the 7th, I have been reminded twice, is American Library Association's Band Book Week, and the theme is Let Freedom Read, and the emphasis is placed on protecting the freedom to read. So just thinking of activities that you can do, that we can do, that just raises attention around the freedom to read. And that is it for me.
Report of the State Superintendent will be perhaps similarly brief. As you could see from the video, we have begun school at virtually every school in the state. That's a good thing, lots of smiles, and lots of optimism for this, for this school year. On August 23rd, Marty Ackley and Allison Shrewsbury joined me at the Michigan League for Public Policy, the Kids Count in Michigan, Champion for Kids 2023 event also, and it In attendance were Board President Dr. Pamela Pugh and Board Member Dr. Mitchell Robinson. MLPP sponsored the event, was at the Lansing Center. It honored Senator Stabenow. But more importantly, the event unpacked or helped unpack the annual Kids Count report, which is put out annually by Annie E. Casey Foundation and then distributed to the states for individual state releases of that report. So I was part of a panel with Dr. Renee Branch Kennedy, President and CEO of Michigan Public Health Institute, Jennifer Headley-Nordman, President of First Steps Kent, and Dr. Ora Hersh Peskovitz, who is the President of Oakland University. It was moderated, the panel was moderated by Stephen Henderson, who used to be a reporter columnist and editor of Detroit Free Press, founder of Bridge Detroit, and is now with Detroit Public Television. We were asked to respond to particular aspects of the Kids Count book. If you have not seen Kids Count, I would recommend that you take a look at it. It's something that's interesting to me each year, and I've looked at it for probably the entirety of its couple-three-decade history. Among the important recommendations of the Kids Count report was the need to continue to improve both the adequacy and the equity of school education funding. The last two education budgets, as I mentioned with Ms. Tilly before lunch, the fiscal year '23 and fiscal year '24 budgets, were the strongest in our state's history post-proposal. That is to say, the strongest in the last 30 years. Not simply in terms of total dollars, but in terms of categorical dollars for children who have greater needs and whose funding needs to be funded more greatly. So we're talking about economically disadvantaged students, students with disabilities, and English learners principally. That said, we are making up for years of underinvestment in the state. From 1995 to 2015, we were the lowest total revenue growth state in the country, inflation-adjusted, for a 20-year period of time. That underfunding during that 20-year period of time remains an issue for every district in the state, for every child in the state. You don't recover from that in a year or two. So I share that, and I'm going to keep sharing that, because though these have been two outstanding budgets, we remain billions of dollars underfunded in education in the state. And that's not simply my opinion, although it is my opinion. It's the opinion of the School Finance Research Collaborative Study as well, and other studies also. And those studies begin with the Upjohn Institute study of 2015, the adequacy study, Ms. Lipton, which you well recall from the 2014 Not So Lame Duck session. And then coursing through the Special Education Funding Study of then Lieutenant Governor Calley, the School Finance Research Collaborative Study in 2018, the 2019 study from MSU and David Arson, and the 2020 EdTrust Midwest Study. We have to fund our schools better. The funding helps us support more staff. The funding and the staff are our two upstream goals in the state's Top 10 Strategic Education Plan, Ms. Jackson, Dr. Peppin. And they help everything else flow downstream. They help everything else downstream. You get your resources right, your finances, your people, and everything else flows better downstream. And that's what we're trying to do within the state's Top 10 Strategic Education Plan. And that is the state's Top 10 Strategic Education Plan. A second important recommendation of the Kids Count report was the need to expand preschool education in the state. Goal one of Michigan's Top 10 Strategic Education Plan, Michigan's Top 10 Strategic Education Plan, Dr. Cornell, is to do just that, to expand preschool education in the state. And I'm pleased to note that the flexibilities that the State Board of Education and MDE recommended to the legislature and the governor were approved by the state legislature, Lisa Hands Connect, signed into law by the governor in July. And in a month, they generated almost 9,000 additional asks for slots for preschool in this school year. There are 38,000 children in preschool, GSRP preschool, last year. ISDs have asked for more than 52,000 children to be funded for this school year. That is an enormous change. And those flexibilities include moving from four instructional days a week to five instructional days a week, 30 instructional weeks a year to 36 instructional weeks a year. The power of actually meeting the needs of families with our top-in-the-country GSRP program. So I point that out because those are two recommendations from the Kids Count report, which are consonant with Michigan's Top 10 Strategic Education Plan. And I might add, the expansion of preschool education is a developmental upstream goal, right? So we have resource upstream goals that flow downstream, and then we have developmental upstream goals that flow downstream. Do better early, you do better late. Don't do as well early, you don't do as well late. So I want to shout out to, give a shout out to Ari Wade, a member of the Grand Rapids Public Schools Board of Education, the Director of Education for the Baxter Community Center in Grand Rapids, who is reportedly a regular viewer or listener to our monthly board meetings. And then to the issue of communities and schools. So some of you are aware of communities and schools, which is a pretty impactful organization nationally. Last week, I spoke briefly to attendees of the CIS National Leadership Town Hall in Detroit during the All-In-For-Students Awards Ceremony. As you may know, CIS is an organization that provides integrated student support for children. And so it believes in not simply the academic, but wraparound support around the children. So whether you're about mentoring or tutoring or children's physical or mental health, getting kids to school or keeping them in school, you're about what CIS is about. All the sorts of services that make it more likely that we're successful with children, that they're successful and that they're able to navigate school successfully and then move on to a career interest of their choice. I was fortunate in Kalamazoo to have CIS Kalamazoo as a partner among many and to serve on its board. And more importantly, to have its work in our schools on a daily basis. And in spite of the fact that we had to cut funding in our district, we expanded CIS because our educators felt that strongly about those wraparound supports around our babies. It was a pleasure to reconnect with CIS Founder Bill Milliken, not to be confused Marty Ackley with the late former governor of Michigan, and to meet current CIS National President and CEO Ray Saldano and many others. CIS Michigan was well-represented board by its Chair. CIS Michigan's Board's Chair is David Hecker. Several of the board members and its CEO Mallory Deprecle. In addition to staff and community honorees, and this is sort of the connected dot that you see sometimes at these events. CIS lifted up the Ballmer Group, which had recently given $165 million. Just wrap your head around that number, to CIS National to support the expansion of integrated support services nationally in the coming years. They hope to go from being in 5,000 schools to 6,000 schools nationally in the coming years. I was appreciative of the contribution of the Ballmer Group, with which some members of MDE have met over the last couple of years to lightly share ideas about community schools and some of these wraparound supports, which are so important and which Ballmer Group has invested in. Ballmer Group does have a Detroit presence because its namesake, Steve Ballmer, actually comes from Detroit. And that, board members, is my report for the meeting. Next item on today's agenda, much more interesting, is a presentation on, of the report of the Teacher of the Year. Ms. Candace Jackson, the current Michigan Teacher of the Year, is a third-grade teacher at Mann Learning Community in Detroit Public Schools Community District. Ms. Jackson is joined by Dr. Gina Peppin, Region One Teacher of the Year, who teaches at Lemur Elementary School in Escanaba area public schools. We welcome Ms. Jackson and Dr. Peppin to present their report. Teachers of the Year, welcome.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Well, I'll start out, if that's okay with you. My name is Dr. Gina Peppin, and I have been here before, and it's wonderful to be back here. I was here in 2018, 2019 as the first cohort of Regional Teachers of the Year. And I was also part of that original MT-LAC council that was the year before. So this is my third year in MT-LAC. And so I am really excited to be here for those purposes. As well as Nanette Hansen, from last year, is a good friend of mine and teaches across the hall from me. So bless you. I, when Candace and I first came up with this, it was several months ago. So we were kind of brainstorming on some different things that we could do. And we thought that it would be something fun to just introduce some different tips for teachers as they're venturing back into the new school year and things like that. So this is a little bit more of a fun presentation. It's not a whole lot of advocacy in any way, but just really our own perceptions for new and old teachers and some of our insight that we can provide for them to hopefully have a successful year. So let's see if we can... So that was just a little bit of history about me. And I would love to provide some insight during, while I'm in this position as well. I have a lot of history and experience. My area of expertise is teacher leadership and literacy. And I have publications on both the science of reading and the power of joy in reading and a lot of early literacy things. And I'd be super glad and honored if you had any questions. You know, what is it like at the university level? I am also, I have several cohorts and courses that I teach for graduate literacy courses as well as K-12 and university supervisors. So I would always love to share and provide some insight of someone in the field. So please feel free to reach out at any time. So our agenda for today was I'm going to be speaking more towards veteran teachers, and then Candace is going to share some on novice teachers. And then she's going to provide a little bit of an update. So tips for teachers. The first thing that I started out with was beyond the traditional tips that we often hear in the field, you know, create a comfortable environment and all of those other things. These were some of the things that I felt were really important for any level of a teacher. So the first one is to truly know yourself really well. Understand who you are. What are your emotions? What are your limits? What is your level of grit? And what are you capable of doing truly comfortably? What are your core values? And what are your social identities? And I think most importantly, that teacher leader in me always thinks about what ignites your soul. You have to really be able to dictate that, articulate that, I should say that more so, so that everyone else can kind of also think deeply about what their, what ignites their soul, what drives them, what keeps them in education, right? It's a little bit of deepening that self-discovery and self-awareness. And of course, all of that is going to help you create meaningful connections and build those really, really key and important relationships. Number two is lean on those experts in the field. I feel like everybody has a strength, or more than one. And I think leaning on those experts, finding out who they are, talking with others, and kind of rallying and rounding up those people and learning from them is really, really going to help you be a better educator. So for example, the National Teacher of the Year had shared some things that they had talked about, sharing wisdom and advocating for students, and of course, talking about some of those issues and inspiring others to join the profession. I think one of the most important things is being able to look at both sides of an issue, looking at it from multiple perspectives. And experts are on both sides, or even in the neutral ground, are going to provide you a lot of insight to help you further mold and develop what your passions and, you know, where you want to really be an advocate and what areas those actually will be. So number three is be really strategic. We talk about this in everything we do, even from our little kindergartners and our preschoolers, is setting those goals. What do you want to accomplish today, tomorrow, and the next 30 years, right? Having a mission, having a vision. Our school does the Leader in Me program. We are all about writing one-word mission statements and phrases and classroom mottos and classroom mission statements. And of course, what are your metrics? Or in layman's terms, what are your targets? What are your goals? And how are you going to track them? And who's going to hold you accountable? Who are you going to have that conversation with when you start to, oh, you start to have a little bit of a tangent or you get off of track? I think all of those things are really important. And building these systems individually and collectively are really going to help you be the best educator that you can possibly be. Number four is, and this is kind of one of those buzzwords right now, but I really like it, is to be present. What's going on right now, right? What's, turn everything off, focus. Who's talking to you? Who's looking at you? Is it hot in here? Is it cold in here? How do you feel? What is the day going to bring for you today? And how was your morning so far? And what does your afternoon look like? Of course, having a growth mindset and then really being able to find the extraordinary in those everyday experiences, those occurrences, those things that start to become routine and redundant, somehow being able to find those little hidden treasures in every moment is really going to help keep you in the field, it's going to keep you sane, and it's going to keep you inspired and motivated to get up every single day and change lives. And of course, number five is learn everything you can about the field. In my building, I'm kind of known as the data queen, and I will tell you, I'm an English major and math is not at all my suit. But when data makes sense to me, then it's something that I want to find out more about, right? I tend to research a lot. I tend to do a lot of reading and a lot of digging and a lot of talking and a lot of discussing with others in the field. So finding what your depth of that is and that comfort level for you is going to be really important. But you can also find a buddy that can summarize things for you rather than having to read the research. What are the keys and hot topics right now? And what are both sides of the story? But really, truly learning everything you can about the field is going to provide talking points for you. It's going to help clarify some things that may be a misperception. And it also may be something that you can lend a voice or a piece of action to as well. So again, just reaching out, collaborating and advocating and transforming the field of education from your own experiences and perspective is something that I always like to talk to my teacher candidates or mentorships in the building and even students. And of course, my ending usually goes like this, is to inspire others and do really great things. But most importantly, the thing you have the most control over is do intentional good. And Candace?
So my task was to address the novice teacher. She was talking more towards veteran teachers. But I think the tips that I have for novice teachers or pre-service teachers could be applicable for even seasoned teachers. The first tip that I have, or the first bit of advice, you can advance the slide, is that finding a good mentor. A good mentor can offer invaluable benefits. They provide hands-on guidance, and they can be a supportive presence in a classroom. They can share their knowledge and expertise in a field and different tactical and practical tips to help you get acclimated to being in the school. They're great for networking and network expansion. You can grow your, the teachers that you know, the, expand your reach is what I'm trying to say. So they're definitely great for that. And basically, in a nutshell, having a good mentor is kind of like having a personal PD consultant at your disposal. consultant at your disposal. They are helpful in more ways than one, and my advice for any teacher would be to find a good mentor to help you when you first get started. The next tip that I would give novice teachers is to practice self-help. Again, this is something that novice and veteran teachers should do because self-help is very pivotal. It plays a pivotal role in nurturing your personal and professional development. Teacher burnout is real, and it can reduce your job satisfaction. It can decrease effectiveness in a classroom. It can lead to lack of teacher retention. And I think that taking care of yourself first, if you're, if you're no good for yourself, you can't be good to others, so taking care of yourself is definitely crucial to being an effective teacher. To help mitigate this, I would encourage new educators to prioritize setting boundaries. I think I put on a board, learning how to say no and not justifying it. This helps you stay focused and avoid unnecessary commitments and establish clear personal and professional boundaries, which all educators, myself included, we have a hard time doing because we're deeply dedicated to our children and sometimes at the expense of our own personal selves. We spend long hours lesson planning and grading papers, and it leaves little time for little else. So having and creating a good work-life balance is something that I would encourage new teachers to make sure they prioritize because it helps you to maintain a healthy and fulfilling life. It's important that you do things that make you feel recharged and refreshed every day, whether that's reading, or hiking, or camping, or baking. For me, it's doing yoga or exercising, but basically anything that can help you alleviate stress, the better you are, the better you're taking care of yourself, the better you will be for your students. And last but not least, for the self-help, I would encourage new teachers to understand that mistakes are inevitable and to give themselves grace. Giving yourself grace is an act of self-love, and if you do not, you know, give yourself grace and kindness, then again, you're going to be no good for anyone else. And it promotes mental health, health, it promotes resilience, and it's great for your personal growth. And my last bit of advice for novice teachers is to establish clear and consistent rules and expectations. The first two were kind of like personal goals, but the last one is more geared towards the classroom. Establishing clear rules and expectations early in a year, like right now in September, is crucial to the remainder of your year. The tone that you set in your classroom right now determines how your year is going to go, and it benefits both the students and the teacher. It creates a conducive learning environment. It promotes responsible behavior. It fosters a sense of fairness and equity. And not having clear and consistent routines and procedures can be frustrating for the teacher and the students in the classroom. So more than anything, I would tell a new teacher to make sure that you are establishing those expectations and routines right away, and make sure that you're consistent and firm because the moment you deviate, not, not that you can't deviate, but the moment you do one thing for one student, a student will pick up on that and say, well, you said we can't do this, but clearly we can because you just let such and such do that. So being clear and consistent across the board is very critical right now in September, and assess the tone for how your classroom is going to go for the remainder of the year. Because after all, we don't want to have missed opportunity for learning. If your classroom is in disorder, then you're going to not be able to be as effective with teaching as you would be if you had strong classroom management. So as we think about like, things like teacher recruitment and teacher retention, I think keeping these tips at the top of mind should be key. Teacher retention is essential for the success for the Michigan Department of Education, the local school districts, and it's crucial for everyone. So I would say establishing things like mentorship programs to help new teachers navigate their early years should be normalized. I think that most districts do have some form of mentorship. However, the fidelity and integrity in which they are implemented varies greatly. I think that we need to see more wellness program and mental health supports in the schools to help the teachers deal with the copes and, or to cope with the challenges of their new profession and proactively address things like teacher burnout. So those are the things that I actually think should be at the top of mind for new teachers, new administrators, administrators welcoming new teachers, all of that. So the next thing on my thing is MTOI updates. I think we're all done with our teacher tips.
Do you guys have any questions on teacher tips? I can't redo that now. Any questions?
Questions or comments from board members?
Comments?
Sound like life tips.
I was going to say, I'll take those too.
Thank you.
Especially the one, don't say, justifying why you have to say no sometimes.
Yeah.
Say no, it's okay.
And as I was like going over this, I was, as I was going over it like last night at 10 o'clock in my hotel room, I was like, I need to take this tip, like I'm not prioritizing my work-life balance right now. So it's easier said than done.
Just tell me when to turn.
Yep, go ahead. So I had a very full summer. I had the opportunity to attend an educational conference in Louisville, Kentucky. On the screen, you can see I'm taking pictures with a couple of the former MTOIs in prior years. It was an educational conference. Like I said, it was in Kentucky. I learned a lot of useful skills. I saw a lot of great presentations from former Teachers of the Year and National Teachers of the Year, so that was very, very cool. Can you turn the page? We had our first Michigan Teacher Leadership Advisory Council meeting, and we have subsequently met in smaller subcommittees. We've decided that our collective platform will be to create a trauma-informed response toolkit for educators, so we've broken up into two different groups. We have had our, we'll have our second meeting at the end of the month. Again, we've broken off into smaller subcommittees, and we've met, but we'll have our second big group committee at the end of this month. Vanessa Roberts and Jennifer Sank, major from Region One and Nine, and I, we all had a, had the opportunity to go to the Mimic for Education Golf outing, and that was a blast. We did a painting with a twist activity. My painting is not quite as good as the other two, but it was a lot of fun. We got to do some networking, and we really had a good time there. And of course, there's a picture of us at our induction ceremony in August where I attended my first board meeting, and I was able to be joined with the nine other Regional Teachers of the Year. So that was very, very cool. I attended the, I don't know, is there another slide? No. Oh, yeah. I, I'll go back one more then. I attended the Governor's Educational Advisory Council Retreat. I'm trying not to use acronyms at the meeting I was at yesterday. We were forbidden to use acronyms, so I'm trying to say everything out, but the Governor's Educational Advisory Council Retreat, the day after the August School Board meeting, where I got to learn a great deal about the Top Ten Strategic Plan, and I had a crash course on legislature, and I felt very, my brain felt beefed up when I left. And then not pictured here, I had the opportunity to come, I think it was not last week, but the week before, to the staff meeting and have a sit-down conversation with Dr. Rice in front of the, I think it was three staff meeting, and that was probably the highlight of my summer. That was a very good time.
Dr. Rice was your highlight?
It was a lot of fun. It was a lot of fun. And so you can advance the slide. We're looking forward to, again, getting together with our committee, working on our collective platforms and our individual platforms, getting, have some exciting school visits planned, and next month, we're going to be going to Central Michigan University to speak to the College of Education, so lots of fun things on the horizon. And we're excited to see where the fall takes us. We had a pretty full summer. And if there's nothing else, thank you.
Thank you for having us.
Ms. Jackson, you were hit at the all-staff meeting.
Thank you.
They, they want you to come back.
Encore.
Any questions or comments for our Teachers of the Year? Once, twice, thrice? We thank you very much for your presentation.
Thank you for your time.
Board members, the next item on today's agenda is state and federal legislative update. Mr. Marty Ackley, Director of the Office of Public and Governmental Affairs, will lead the state and federal legislative update, followed by Dr. Pritchett's report on the State Board of Education Legislative Committee, and Dr. Robinson's 30-minute report on NASB.
At least.
Strip in.
Dr. Rice. And welcome aboard. The legislature returned to session last week, though not confirmed. There is immense speculation that this fall's session will be abbreviated, and signee die will take place sometime in early to mid-November.
Sorry, what was that, what was that curse word you used?
Signee die?
Yes, well, tell, tell us what that is for those of us who don't know.
Signee die is the, is the end of a legislative session, when the, when the, when the session ends, and then the next session starts in January.
There you go.
There you go. That said, action will be accelerated, as such, on legislation that the leadership in Lansing wants to pass and be enacted. The Senate Education Committee is hearing testimony today on House Bill 4752 to allow retired educators to come back and work in schools without facing a penalty to their pension payments. The bill will provide that after a retiree has been retired for nine consecutive months, he or she can come back and earn up to $15,000 in a calendar year without penalty to his or her retirement benefits. The House passed bill, had a $10,000 cap, and the Senate substitute is going to be $15,000 in a calendar year. The bill passed the House on a 100 to 8 vote, and now it's in the Senate, and they took testimony this afternoon. Deputy Superintendent Dr. Diane Gozinski will be testifying to the Senate Education Committee next week on the effort to add universal meals to the state school code. That is currently, universal meals is in the state aid budget, and a bill would be introduced soon to encase that in the school code to codify it. The Senate will also be working on legislation to amend the educator evaluation law. Dr. Rice and Dr. Cheryl Kennedy, our legislative liaison, will be testifying to the Senate Education Committee later this month. The House Education Committee this morning heard testimony on school safety, with testimony from statewide education organizations and local educators. We believe there's a package of bills that are going to be introduced, or has been introduced, to address various school safety issues. Other education issues that will be moving this fall expected include bills addressing dyslexia, the Work Keys Assessment, and charter school transparency. None of those bills have been introduced yet, but are expected to be. The charter school transparency package is expected to start in the House of Representatives. House Bill 4648, to modify pupil count day, to provide for an alternative day for the counting of pupils who are absent during, due to a religious observance or holiday, is on second reading in the House. House Bills 4341 to 42, to require Walter filtration systems in all schools by the 2025, '26 school year. Those bills are also on second reading in the House. Foster care students' education bills, House Bills 4676 to 78, to ensure that children placed in foster care are provided with an education that prioritizes meeting the state's graduation requirements, as well as receiving educational records to the same extent that students who are not in foster care receive. That bill is on second reading in the House. On August 30th, Governor Whitmer presented her What Next address to outline her legislative priorities for the fall and beyond. They include protecting reproductive health, lowering the cost of healthcare, lowering the cost of prescription drugs, enacting a 100% clean energy standard in Michigan, improving energy efficiency, shoring up election security, and establishing paid family and medical leave, which is kind of setting up the resolution that will be discussed later in this meeting. The state Board's Legislative Committee met on August 31 and discussed several of the issues that I have already shared, but now I'll pass it over to the committee chair, Dr. Judy Pritchett, to share more.
Thank you. We, as Marty has indicated, did have discussions and an update from him regarding bills that were getting ready to be introduced or had been introduced. We spent some time talking about the teacher evaluation bills that have been proposed, and so there was some discussion about that. And then there was some discussion also about the FAFSA to graduate bill, and Senator Kamelary had introduced that bill prior, in a prior meeting. That bill had not been introduced yet. Now it's been introduced. So we had the opportunity to speak with Senator Kamelary, that would be Mr. Bullock, Dr. Robinson, and myself on a Zoom call. We probably spoke within maybe 20 minutes, 25 minutes. I'll have my colleagues share here, but I thought we did an excellent job of trying to outline for him what our major concerns were. There are opt-outs supposedly written into the bill, hardship opt-outs, to the point that even if a parent would refuse to sign an opt-out, that then a building administrator or counselor could sign it for them. But again, the three of us, I think, expressed our concerns, especially Dr. Robinson. So I'm going to let my two colleagues kind of fill in where their concerns were, just so you're aware of the fact that we did have a conversation for about 15, 20 minutes with the senator, so he knows where we're coming from.
We, I guess, we, I am particularly, well, Senator Kamelary respectfully disagreed with some of our concerns. I'm stuck on the unintended consequences and the negative impact of placing the onus on the child to do the adult work. There are opt-outs, but the opt-outs still rely on the parent to opt-out. If I don't want to fill out the FAFSA form, I'm probably not going to fill out the opt-out form.
Right.
You know? Then this child has to go through measures to get counselors and other folks on board to then put them in the opt-out. It's just too much of noneducational hooplas for a child to put on a mandatory guideline for graduation. I just think there are other ways to market encouragement that I haven't seen, because my three kids just came out of high school, that I haven't seen it applied in a way that they can say that's failed before we try to put in and implement some mandatory legislation.
What Marshall said.
Okay. All right. So obviously, we'll be kept updated on the bill as it is. I agree with Marshall. He listened attentively, but I'm not sure, agreed with anything we said, except he understands the concerns that we have, have. And our next meeting is September 28 at 12:30, and it is posted on Teams because it's virtual.
Very much. Mr. Ackley, Dr. Pritchett, Dr. Robinson, to you.
I do not have anything to report.
Okay, very good. Any questions or comments associated with the presentation, board members? Yep, please.
Thank you for the, the conversation on the FAFSA completion. I think that the intention is probably coming from a place of, you know, positivity. It does seem to be part of a national trend, that some national organizations are pushing, like TICAS, like NCAN, to try to get states to... like TICAS, like NCAN, to try to get states to mandate the completion of FAFSA as a graduation requirement. I will say, in states that have done that, most notable New York, it has not gone well. And to the extent that we can at least learn from other states, I think we should probably proceed with caution. And, you know, when you have something that is well-intentioned and you create so many opt-outs that you kind of, the Swiss cheese is now all air, you then sort of have to look at, why are we doing this? And if we had college access advisors, which is a model that we use in our Promise Zones, not guidance counselors, but actual college access advisors, I think that the state would see a big uptick. But a mandate, it's been problematic in other states, and I just think that we may be falling into that trap.
Yeah. There was that discussion. There was only a few states, so California, I think I sent it to us while we were on the call, but we all, including Dr. Rice, we believe that it's coming from a place with good intentions, it's just that. My thing about the data, wanting more kids to go to school, wanting more kids to know about what they can receive money, that they're eligible for money, that don't know or have applied for money. 50% of our kids aren't going to school allegedly, but he can't tell me the data on what the other 50 went. Like, did they go to the military? Did they go to trades? Did they go? So they don't need to fill it out. So if I don't, if I've already chosen the military, or I've already chosen to go to plumbing trade school or carpenter's mill rights, why are you forcing me? That money doesn't, it doesn't come to me. It's, you know, I don't need it. It's not coming to me. I've made my decision.
I'll add, one other unintended consequence that we didn't discuss with the senator is when the number of students and families, really, applying for financial aid and loans increases, the likelihood of more student loan debt being incurred with usurious loan companies, which has been a nationwide problem, also increases. And I'm not hearing any other kind of capacity building, like Ellen's mentioning with student, with college advisors helping to fill out the forms. I'd like to hear more about what we're going to do to keep track of loan companies that are predatory. I'd like to know what we're going to do when more students go into default on these, on loans, that they, you know, they filled out the FAFSA, but they weren't sure where they were getting the loan from, or, so this is what worries me. I know we passed financial literacy goals.
We talked about it.
Right, having loans, but all of these things are, this is a lot of moving Lego pieces at the same time. And to be fair, I think the senator also talked about the forms. For FAFSA are allegedly going to be revised to be much more simple. I will believe that when I see it. Having filled out many FAFSA's over the years, I will believe a simple loan form when I see it.
It's not necessarily going to be more simple.
Yeah.
Not, ever.
In addition to what Mitch is saying is, traditionally, you get more money in your freshman year. The second year, third year, you don't always get as much, and then you turn to the loans and wind up in a scenario.
Thank you both. Ms. Snyder?
I'd just say two things. I mean, I'm going to echo everything you guys are saying, but the two things that really stand out to me are just a huge data grab, and I would say, you know, that we've even seen that, you know, with the free lunch that's going on. If you guys look at the free lunch form, it includes personal income information and well beyond what it used to be. And then with the FAFSA requirement, there's just a massive data mine that's happening, and privacy is an issue, not just for the student, but for the parents. So I think that that's huge. And anytime, I mean, anytime we talk about this, debt after diploma is a theme that we have to keep revisiting on behalf of students, because it's unfair and unjust to have the discussion of sign-on-the-die-to-line without them fully understanding what that even means. And, you know, we'll do our financial literacy component, and yet they'll still wake up one day and go, oh, I didn't realize I was taking out $40,000 of debt for a career that doesn't make that kind of money. So, I mean, it's just something that, developmentally speaking, it's hard for them to conceptualize. But it's a very big issue. And then we haven't solved issues at the federal level that include things like, it's not just, you know, predatory loan companies, it's the way the federal government administers student loans, too. There's a ton of interest, and if something happens in your life that's outside of the norm, you can't pay your student loans at a certain time, it can balloon from $30,000 to $50,000 within the first 10 years that you're working. And before you know it, you're not only trapped underneath the weight of the debt of that student loan, but the interest that the government has the right to assess. So, I mean, it's just something, I mean, we don't just jump into, everybody has to fill out the FAFSA before, in order to get a diploma. That's just, it's just really greedy. It's problematic.
Thank you. Other Board member comments on FAFSA? We're going to be watching this closely. We will be making our voices heard on this particular issue. Anything more for the good of the group in that really rich legislative update tour?
Question.
Ms. Tilly?
And I don't know if you guys said it and I missed it, but I know we were working on a legislative luncheon. How is that coming?
We have to set that up for the fall.
We do, and given the fact that it's going to be an accelerated session, we're keeping that in mind as far as trying to schedule it, depending on when the legislators are going to have time to be able to fit it into their schedules also. But yes, that's still in discussion.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you. Anything more for the good of the group? Once, twice, thrice? Hearing nothing? Thank you very much, Mr. Ackley. Dr. Pugh, you had a resolution which was placed on the agenda. Would you like to move it?
Don't move.
We have a resolution moved by Dr. Pugh. Do we have a second associated therewith? Second by Ms. Tilly. Dr. Pugh, to you to read that resolution into the record and to discuss it.
Resolution in support of Senate and House bill for family leave optimal coverage, FLOC. And this is Senate Bill 332 and 333, and House Bill 4574 and 4575. Whereas the Michigan State Board of Education passed a resolution on May 9, 2023, in support of the enactment of paid leave, and which called on the Michigan State Supreme Court to weigh in, educate the pertinent matter of enacting paid leave and increase of minimum wage and preservation of direct democracy. Whereas Michigan Family Leave Act, or MYFLOC, is a state-run paid family leave program that would provide eligible employees with up to 15 weeks of paid leave, giving workers time away from their jobs to take care of their health, care of their family members, including parental leave. Whereas MYFLOC Coalition is working to pass family leave optimal coverage, as well as to build support for Michigan time-to-care case that will soon be in front of the Michigan Supreme Court. Whereas the Michigan Paid Leave for All is a coalition of individuals, business, community groups, and nonprofit organizations that are willing to commit to organize and fight for the right for every worker in Michigan to have access to paid leave optimal coverage to take care of themselves and their loved ones when they are ill. Whereas Governor Gretchen Whitmer outlined in her priorities for the fall legislative session the urgent need for a comprehensive paid leave bill. Whereas family leave optimal coverage was introduced by Senator Erica Geis and Representatives Helena Scott in May of 2023, and it lists the bills. Therefore, be it resolved that the Michigan State Board of Education supports Senate Bill 332, Senate Bill 333, and House Bill 4574, House Bill 4575.
Okay, so we, thank you very much. We have a motion, we have a second, we've had it read into the record. Do you have any thing to add to that resolution?
I think it speaks for itself, and then just continuation of, or just repeating what I said this morning, is that this just supports what we already passed in May. The first was around the Supreme Court case, and now this is bills that actually spell out the paid leave, a comprehensive paid leave policy.
Okay, thank you very much. Other Board members? Mr. McMillan?
Well, I was trying to look into some of the details of the bill. One of them is a 35-page bill. There's no legislative analysis, there's no fiscal analysis. I was able to dig up some specifics. It's expected to be about a $1 billion payroll tax on businesses. There's no opt-out for small companies. It's not like the family leave that's a minimum of 50 employees. Allows employees to miss basically up to 30% of workdays in a year. Gives the state authorities to set annual payroll contributions with no limits. All the few other states that are losing jobs as a result of this kind of stuff, they at least put a limit on it. There certainly will be a cost when those 30% of workdays, they have to find, you know, companies have to find temporary employees. There'll be unintended consequences. We talked about unintended consequences here with, just briefly a little while ago, but as I see it, like small businesses, if this was a, if they're hiring for a critical position, they're going to not hire a full-time, they might hire two part-time, because if somebody's going to be gone 30% of the year, and basically their business would shut down, they probably will want to have two people in part-time, so there's less benefits. There's probably going to be more offshoring of jobs as a result of this, to have kind of backup and have people that will be able to do, again, kind of, especially in the more critical positions, you could have more than just one doing the same thing if somebody's going to be gone 30%, up to 30% of the year. And I just don't know exactly why we're weighing in on this. I mean, if you say it's because it has to do with kids, I mean, virtually every legislation does, you know, the big $700 million corporate welfare handout that the Democrats did for the Chinese company in Michigan, you know, you could say that's taking away from schools or, you know, that's going to impact kids, because, I mean, you could make any argument that basically need legislation, so I, you know, again, without any legislative analysis, without any fiscal analysis, comparing this to many other states, and the fact that this will just continue to run businesses out of the state of Michigan, you know, at the very least, I'll pass. I just don't, again, I don't know exactly why we're weighing in on this.
Thank you, Ms. McMillan. Ms. Snyder?
I would echo Tom. I think it's not germane to the duties of the Board. It's also not consistent with past resolutions related to the Paid Medical Leave Act. It was actually amended by our current governor in '18, and it made it possible so that Michiganders have 12 weeks of paid leave, which is good for new moms. So I'll be passing on the vote, too, but I am going to comment a little bit. So this is exactly what defines more big government, and it's similar to things like the new bureaucracy, like the Unemployment Insurance Agency. It's like UIA 2.0, if you will. It's undoubtedly going to cost businesses and citizens money moving forward. Yes, there is no free lunch, even if you call it that, but it's going to have to be funded and managed at some level. And I will say, this is at a time when Michigan small businesses are struggling with the increased costs of doing business, and it makes no sense. Some might say it's about new moms, but it's pretty disingenuous to consider that. It's anti-business, it's anti-small business, it's pro-big government, and this comes at a time when cranes actually reported just this last year that Michigan led the nation in small business closings in the pandemic. No other state closed small businesses at a higher rate than Michigan. And that directly relates to the policy that, at this board table, we continued to push throughout the pandemic. Keep small business doors closed, keep school doors closed. The entire culture of the pandemic impacted small businesses. And at some point in time, you have to look in the mirror and say, who's going to pay for this? How is this really going to pan out? And at a time that we've already undercut them so significantly. Yeah, I mean, I think it begs sort of, past quotes from President Kennedy, ask not what your government can do for you, but what you can do for your country.
Okay, thank you. Thank you very much for that, Ms. Snyder. Ms. Tilly?
I think it's important that we support parents. If they have an emergency with their health, or their child's health, or a close family member that they need to take care of, they should not have to also worry about their job. You know, businesses, of course, we want to support our businesses, but they have to pivot all of the time, and they can and have the option to get temporary staff through a temp service. But we have to make sure that we're supporting people first, and parents and families. So I think this is definitely on point.
Thank you, Ms. Tilly. Dr. Pugh?
I will just say that, you know, we can, if we're talking about COVID, and we're talking about small business, and women were impacted the most when we look at the workforce as well as small business owners. So I think that this bill would help with what we learned from COVID as it relates to that, as it, how it is germane to what we're talking about, what this table is about. I think we could reference the May 9 resolution that has more of that information there. And then the only other thing that I would ask is if folks here would be okay with Liz checking the punctuation in this, maybe the endings of the, I don't know if we need periods at the end of the resolution. Someone tell me.
I don't think it matters. I don't think it matters.
All right. I know once before I saw some punctuation.
I don't think anybody's going to, not at this late date.
Okay.
Maybe, maybe a little earlier.
Okay.
But not on the board floor. We're not going to, we're not going to work on punctuation on the board floor. Ms. Snyder?
So just in the spirit of what we just talked about, the facts on the table are that parents are supported, moms and dads are supported, families are supported. OSHA actually had a guideline that was funded through COVID dollars, that if your family member was sick or you got sick on the job, that your employer had to cover your time off. So that's already on the books. And again, the Paid Medical Leave Act, updated in 2018, underneath Governor Whitmer, gives you 12 weeks of FMLA paid leave. So I ask you to just consider, the things that we're talking about, we already have coverage for these things. We already have statutory and regulatory bodies covering the fact that we collectively value moms, dads, and families that need to take care of themselves and their family members. So it's just something to consider when we, when we think about where we're truly at post-pandemic and how you go both ways and negotiate.
Thank you very much. Other reflections? Going once, twice? Is Lipton? Nope? Okay. Looking around, can't give it away. Okay. Hearing no additional comments. Ms. Evans, if we could do a roll call vote, please.
Bullock?
Yes.
Lipton?
Yes.
McMillan?
Pass.
Pritchett?
Yes.
Pugh?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yep.
Snyder?
Pass.
And Tilly?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you very much, Board. Were it comments by a State Board of Education member? Mr. McMillan?
The discussion about literacy was really interesting and good, and we went over, like, 20 minutes of our lunchtime. I think it was, we should continue talking about this. I appreciated Board Member Tilly and her passion on the, on phonics, explicit phonics. I think that, I was just looking at Diane Ravitch's blog, and two years ago, she talked about the reading wars are over and, whatever the whole language, caulkens, has failed, although it's still being used like in Troy and other districts. And parents are trying, are banging their heads against the wall, trying to get districts to stop harming their children. trying to get districts to stop harming their children. But there was this idea that I heard from the end of the table that, and I agree, we are a local-controlled state. But, you know, I remember during the Common Core battles that I led in the legislature. By the way, that Common Core is opposed to phonics. And we really do, I really do believe we need to bring those standards back. Standards drive curriculum. No, we don't dictate curriculum. But we do, one of the most important things this board does, besides hiring and firing the state superintendent, is standards. And so, and also universities and our relationship with the teaching universities. So, but the standards, I believe, we really need to ratchet it up, bring the ELA standards back before us. We, every day that passes is more time that schools are not aligning curriculum to the, they're aligning them to a failed standard. And we are just exacerbating the problem of teaching. You know, I mean, this is something that is across the spectrum. It's not a Republican or Democrat issue. It's bipartisan. And I think that, you know, the standards drive the state test, the ELA test. So, I mean, there's just, and we know the curriculum is driven by standards and by the state test. So I just would, I really see no reason to put this on the top priority next month and every month, that we need to really start changing our standards to make sure that we get any kind of whole language, you know, I mean, that we, you know, anything that's harmful by science, that it's clear that it's harmful, that we get it out of our standards and we bring in good standards and make sure that there's explicit phonics in them and that that's what we would recommend. So that's my main concern. And like I said, I think it's one of the main things we do here, our standards. And if we see flaws in standards, we should run quickly to correct them and not, you know, wait years or let it be phased in with a bunch of other stuff. Make, you know, make it a high priority. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Other board members? Ms. Snyder?
So I'm just going to comment in the interest of transparency and accountability. When we talked about taping or recording the legislative committee meetings, that comes, again, this is the second time we talked about that. The first time we talked about it, I had to kind of defend myself at the board table about the actual factual ways in which a certain meeting happened. And the same thing happened this morning when we came to the table and talked about resolutions being submitted on time. I'm someone who takes very seriously that you follow the rules. If the rule is there, it's the rule for everyone, not for one, two, or three, and not for the rest. So, and I do have text messages, Judy, where you and I have, we communicated in August about you not seeing the resolution before the 9:30 a.m. deadline because they weren't there. And so, you know, this morning, when we talked about when my resolution got in, it was yesterday. It may not have been exactly at the 9:30 a.m. deadline. But I just ask board members, number one, can we operate in facts, in reality? And number two, if we pass rules that we want everybody to abide by, we need to abide by them ourselves. It needs to be a consistent application. It just makes a difference in the overall diplomatic concept of what we're doing and the work that we do.
Thank you very much. Ms. Lipton?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I would just, two things. I would just say that the best way to, for a democratic society and a democratically elected board, to adhere by self-imposed rules is to adhere by self-imposed rules. And to not use the excuse of other people not adhering to them to not adhere to them. So I think you should have the self-discipline to adhere to the rules. Having said that, I would like to uplift a program that I'm very excited about. The MDE, in conjunction with the state, is offering challenge grants to every school in the state. You can go on the MCAN website to see what your school would be entitled to receive. I think you'll be very pleasantly surprised. $50 per student in grades 12. And this is challenge grants for FAFSA completion. This is a very positive way to encourage those students who do want to seek post-secondary credentials to complete FAFSA, be able to compete for Pell Grants, Michigan Achievement Scholarship Grants, Promise Zone scholarships. And so, this is something that I think we should all be very proud of. And schools can use that to hire college access advisors who research tells us are key in increasing the college-going culture of a school district. So challenge grants for FAFSA completion encourage school districts to apply.
Okay, thank you very much, Ms. Lipton. Ms. Tilly?
I would like to invite Dr. Bhagdusarian back. It's the beginning of the school year. There are more COVID cases coming back up. And I would love her recommendations. As well as, I would like information on the intervention that took place during COVID. You know, how many lives were actually saved because of the interventions that were done? So I would love a report on that. And then, as far as in reference to phonics, I would love to see us do more work in that area. It is a bipartisan issue. It is something that we talk about on a national level at NASB, and that there are trends nationally where people are, or districts are moving away from whole language and back to phonics. So I would definitely love to see more work. I am a fan of phonics, always have been. So I would love to see that.
Thank you very much. If Dr. Bhagdusarian were to come, she would likely speak additionally on the importance of vaccinations associated with childhood diseases. Measles, mumps, and dandy. That would be a piece of what she would discuss as well. That's something that's important to MDHHS. It's something that's important to MDE. It's important to schoolspeople. It has the potential to disrupt the student's education. So she would likely speak to that as well as some of these other issues as well.
Thank you.
Yep, you bet. Anything else? Dr. Pritchett?
Thank you. I just wanted to acknowledge that CIEC has had their first meeting. Candace was there yesterday, I believe. I had the opportunity to join via Zoom and just make a couple of remarks about how much we appreciate them as a board and their advice that they give us. So just wanted to mention that, that CIEC is up and running this year.
Thank you very much. And remind us what CIEC is for those who are, those who are listening who may not know.
Right. Special Education Advisory Committee. Is that for acknowledgement? Do I have it? Okay.
Okay. Thank you very much, Dr. Pritchett. Let's see if everybody's gotten their first bites before we go to a second. Once, twice, thrice? To you for a second.
Just to clarify the discussion, I think as far as resolutions go, it was clear that last month, the Democrats had a resolution that was submitted after 9:30. So they had a resolution submitted after 9:30.
What resolution was it, by whom?
Both of them were submitted after 9:30.
Okay, let's be clear. Not accurate, okay? The record shows, first of all, it's 9:30 to us, not 9:30 to you. It is 9:30 to us. That's number one. And number two, they were not there after the fact. So at some point, well, I don't know how you know that.
It shows that. There is data and evidence on this. And by the way, just to make clear, too, I know it predates you, Ellen, but this was a rule that you guys brought to the table. Democrats brought this to the table, not me. It's not a self-imposed rule. To be completely honest with you, I think you can think on your feet or move to table a resolution if you so choose. This was something that you all wanted, and so you need to honor the rule that you put forth. It's that basic. And if you don't, don't be upset if other people don't follow a rule that they weren't self-imposing in the first place.
Okay. Anything more for the good of the group?
Just hope we have a great second half. But again, the table's not Democrat versus Republican. The table is eight individuals here to work as a whole.
On behalf of children?
Bring your politics to the table, then we have these issues.
Okay. So you don't bring politics into it?
Just saying.
Every day.
I've said this since day one.
Every day.
Future meeting dates, board members, are October 10th, November 14th, December 12th, all Tuesdays, all 9:30 p.m. regular meetings. If there are any additional topics board members would like included for consideration in future meeting agendas, please contact Ms. Evans.